Okay, welcome to the twenty September 25th, 2024 Policy Workshop of the Grafton School Committee. We are being recorded but not broadcast. We do have some folks in the gallery and I just want to remind everybody that we are having a workshop. That means there will be no public participation tonight. Thank you for coming to observe. We're happy to answer questions afterwards. If you want to submit them via email or come talk to us, that's totally fine. But this is a meeting for the committee to do some work and so we're going to be kind of a little more insulated than we usually are. Before we get started tonight, I just want to have a brief discussion with the committee about what the goals are for tonight. I personally, when this was first suggested at the meeting, my thought was that the goal for tonight is to come out with solutions. That we're focused on moving forward, having a plan to make the appropriate adjustments to the policy manual. And I just wanted to see if anybody else has any thoughts on that. I would like to keep the discussion targeted at goals and not having to have another meeting. We do have one of these scheduled again in a couple of weeks if we need it. But I'm pretty confident that we can get through this tonight and come out of here with a structured plan of how we're going to move forward. So we can focus on some other topics. Okay? So with that said, Kristi would like to go first and she's going to go ahead and do her presentation. And then we'll have the Policy Subcommittee do their presentation and then we'll discuss. And I believe, Kristi, you and I had talked about that you're happy to take questions as you go.
Yeah, I'll monologue it and if you want to interrupt me with a question, please feel free. But I'm not going to stop and keep saying, does anybody have any questions?
Actually, I'm actually moving over because I can't. Let's see.
You can move my stuff. Amy, yeah.
I won't look at your computer, don't worry.
No, what, you're going to look at my husband and kids?
I'm just going to stare at your beautiful family.
Oh, thank you.
I just, I have trouble seeing because of the glare.
You can knock it down.
All right. I like to look. Hi.
Are we all ready?
Yep.
Ready.
Okay. So before I start my presentation, I just wanted to give a presentation statement. So basically, like Amy said, our focus is the goals, but we need to understand what the problems are before we can understand how to make them better. So this is, the research based in this presentation are all my findings that stem solely from my work that was presented back on April 30th. It says an individual prize for my election as school committee. Policy examples, these are illustrations of specific policies, but they represent many that exist in the 2024 manual. Think of them as a cockroach. You see one, but there are many in the walls here. And then the focus area, this presentation, I don't want to get bogged down with policies. This is not to endorse or deliberate any policy. It's just to underscore the critical need for thorough investigation to improve our policymaking process. So first, let's define policy. What is policy? Policy are formal statements and guidelines. They guide the district in decisions that we make. They ensure consistency and compliance with state and federal laws. And really, they establish the framework, right, for our core values. Our role for policy in the school committee is really three areas. We focus on development, we create the policies, we review and revise them, and we oversee implementation. We ensure that all these policies that we make are not just a book thrown in a back corner, that they are actually being adhered to because they're very important. All of the policies are important. So back in 2023, there was a vote by the school committee. And the vote was to switch over to MASC. The MASC, they're a great organization and they have a service for anybody here who doesn't know. It's a policy service. MASC holds, they have a huge reference manual, right, we all know, of many policies. They write policies for the whole Commonwealth. Not every policy applies to every district, so they have a reference manual. So our vote was a hybrid method. The vote was to accept the MASC versions of the policies that we currently had, with the exception of 82 policies that were to remain as Grafton-specific. So we had at that point 267 policies. So 185 were to switch over to MASC. The version, like if we had policy A, it switched over to the MASC policy A, right? We all agree. And then 82 were to remain as our own. And this was at a cost of $3,500 for the first year and $950 for the second year. We signed a two-year contract on January 10th. So I started looking at the policy manual and saw some discrepancies. And I spoke with the committee and I spoke with Dr. Cummings. And on April 23rd, Dr. Cummings provided me with the manual, the 2023 manual. And I did an audit to find discrepancies, to create a listing of discrepancies. And that audit was presented to the school committee and to the superintendent on April 30th. And on that audit, we had, at that point, we had 271 policies at that time. There were five categories of concern within the Grafton Public School Policy Manual. You have missing policies, new policies, the Grafton-specific policies, the adopted MASC policies, and updated MASC policies. We're going to look at each one of these categories. The first category is missing policies. We should all be aware of this. Dr. Cummings sent a list in 2024 in June, based on my audit, of the missing policies along with his recommendations. On his listing, he had 85 policies listed. So you may wonder why the difference between 85 and 101. And if you look at his listing, the reason for that being is that Dr. Cummings references Section G fully and doesn't separate out each policy. So that's the reason for the number discrepancy that we're looking at. But regardless, if we delete a policy, we have to look at each policy individually. Okay? We have looked at, and we all know as a committee, we've looked at 39 of these policies have been voted on. That leaves 62 left to go through of the missing policies. These were policies we had before and did not transfer over.
Hi.
Yeah.
Stop me for a second. Are there cases, or have you observed cases where a policy is missing because it's addressed elsewhere? Or have you kind of accounted for that?
I've accounted for those.
Okay.
So in my audit, I made those kind of adjustments and it was noted. And I'm happy to go through the audit.
And I have your spreadsheet. I've spent a ton of time with it and it's very comprehensive for sure. So.
So it shows there, if you look, instead of like an X listed, it will say ABC.
Yep. Okay. But that's accounted in your numbers when you're talking about it?
Yes, 100%. Those are all accounted for in the numbers. Really, in that audit, anything that's highlighted is an action item. That's how you should think of it. So if it's highlighted on the 2023 manual, that means it's missing. And that's the count, where we're going off of. And if it's highlighted on the 2024 version, that's a policy that hasn't, that we never had.
Okay.
So there's 103 new policies, like we were just talking about. These are policies we never had before. So like we were talking about, we said, we're going to go from, take policy A and take the MASC version of policy A. And we've done that in some cases. But now we have other policies like policy X, Y, and Z. We never had policy X, Y, and Z prior to this transfer and now we have them. And we can't just say that, you know, Dr. Cummings is amazing and we're just adhering to every policy because we know that we adhere to all the policies. That's not true because some of these policies don't even apply to our district. So I'm giving an example, for example, this gang activity one. We never had it and the reason I'm pointing it out is because if we were adhering to it, we'd be providing in-service training to staff to identify gangs and gang symbols. And to my knowledge, that's not happening. So next, we have the 82, and this is all in the backup material Dr. Cummings printed off. So these are the 82 policies that the Grafton School Committee said, these are the ones we're going to keep as our own version. So you go through these, you'll find that some of these have not been reviewed in over three years. An example of that is the bus fees. Last reviewed, July 23rd, 2012. Some of them are no longer applicable, such as face coverings. We don't really need that policy anymore. It's a COVID protocol. And some of these were actually changed to the MASC version, even though we said we want to keep it as our version. It got switched over to the MASC version. So I'm not really sure how you would go about something like that because we voted specifically to keep it as the Grafton version, right? We did not want it, like, this list was made for a reason. The Subcommittee at the time felt that these really needed to be held as Grafton, so it got changed to MASC. I think that you need to vote that because you voted that you wouldn't keep it as an MASC version specifically. Next. We have adopted policies, the MASC policies, and this is a section that needs further review. So MASC, like I said, they write policies for the entire Commonwealth. And they know that they can't be specific for each district. That would be an impossible feat for anybody to do. There's over 300 districts in the Commonwealth. So they do things that what I like to call is boilerplate policies. They refer to mass general laws, keep it as simple as possible. And then they state, they make notes in the bottom a lot of policies and they say, "We would like the district to add X, Y, or Z," right, "to these policies, to make it really for your district." So an example of that is like in policy BB, the school committee legal status. They're asking that the school committee add a statement under that code for the number of school committee members and the length of a regular term. Now, back in July, we deleted a policy that had those things in it and I had stated it at the time. So I'm just stating that there's notes, there's a lot of further work needs to be done on those policies as well. In addition, we have, like I said, adopted MASC policies that also need further review. Some of the policies we adopted don't really reflect our practices. And the problem with this is that we can't be disseminating to sets of information to parents and students and anybody in Grafton. It's just, it's bad for us, it's bad for them, there's no consistency. One example of this is the entrance age to kindergarten. So the policy that we have on our books currently stated, that we currently have states, that you have to be five years of age prior to September 1st. Now, the word prior is very important in that statement because it means before. It doesn't mean on, it means before. It doesn't say on or prior, it says prior. So that means by August 31st. And the MASC version allows for exceptions. Now, the Grafton kindergarten registration form says that you have to be five years of age on or before September 1st. Now, that doesn't seem like a big deal, but I can tell you from personal experience, the parent of the kid that's born on September 1st will find that as a huge deal. Can their kid go to kindergarten or can their kid not go to kindergarten? In addition to that, historically, Grafton, in particular, has never allowed for exceptions to that policy, to that date, rather. They have always stood vastly by to September 1st is the cutoff. On or before, no exceptions at all were to be made to that policy. Yet in our...
I was just going to shut the door. Keep going.
Manual, yet in our manual now, we allow something different. So we have to decide because we have, there's other issues like this throughout the book. Do we keep the policy and change our practice? Or do we change our practice to align with the policy? But we cannot have both. It's just, it's a bad practice. But MASC, I love MASC. I think they're great and they're great for helping districts keep up to date on policies. They do so much work. I have over there my mass general laws book that we got given yesterday. There's no way a school committee, I mean, we're just, we're elected officials, but this is now our full-time job. None of us are sitting here reading mass general laws all day long. It's just not going to happen. So I've always been fully of support of switching over to the MASC policy service. And one benefit from that is that they are regularly reviewing the policies and making sure that they're updated with mass general law, making sure that there's new needs in districts such as like websites and Facebook pages and all this stuff. And they're keeping up on that and that's great. And they send us out newsletters, usually twice a year. Sometimes I think you'll get like three unupdated policies. So the policies from December of 2023 that they sent out have not, we've done nothing with those. They haven't been reviewed, they haven't been added, and the ones that we currently did have never got changed to show the updates.
But we weren't up and running with their service at that point, correct?
So we, well, we had voted in January.
Right.
Right. Yeah, so we had voted in January, but at some point, there was, we were going like this. And I get that maybe it wasn't, but at this point in time, we, you know, that we don't have those policies.
I hear you.
Thank you. Just continue, please.
I have something to say, but...
You can please, please, this is a workshop. No, please.
Yeah, it's a workshop, exactly. And I just, I hear you and I completely agree. I have gone through all the work you did in a lot of detail. I think not everything is the same level of emergency and there is some grace, right? Like, things move over, there are technical things, things absolutely fail. So let's figure out, you know, as we go through this, we're going to see, there is so much to do. That it can't all be done at once. So...
I'm not advocating that it all be done at once and I don't want that to be the takeaway. The takeaway is that there's a lot to be done and I'm just trying to highlight all the issues that are currently in the manual. It wouldn't make sense for me not to state that, yeah, in December. I understand why. I get why, but it's still, the problem still exists.
Fair enough.
So that's all I'm stating.
So maybe I could make a recommendation. That's awesome. Could you just say, yep, we haven't updated December 2023 policies and we need to do that and move forward rather than...
I'm not sure what I did say.
I just, I think we can move forward. I understand that we haven't, right? Do we need to dwell on December 2023 policies?
I, I want to be very clear that we are working, you know, some of this stuff was MASC.
It was messy.
Moving things over and it was messy. There was a switch in people. There's been a lot happening. And so, you know, if there is a more recent one that we hadn't looked at, I would be more concerned. We did just recently look at a more recent one, so it doesn't mean we don't have to deal with it.
No, I 100% agree, Leora. And yes, and when the July one came out, I forwarded on to all of you that we really needed to get that done for the policy, for the handbooks. I have no problem. Things got through. It's fine. I'm just stating that there are issues in the manual that need to be addressed.
I don't think anyone disagrees.
Okay, so that's all we're stating. So we're all in agreement.
Yeah, we are, 100%.
So my recommendation for the substantive policy work. We have to avoid single vote acceptance and we have to review and revise and oversee implementation. So what does this mean? Why can't we have a single vote for the acceptance of the 2024 policy manual? To start with, it will violate our policies on adoption and suspension of policy. Second of all, it neglects, we neglect due diligence. We need to look into all these policies. This is not a "we know that we're doing it" kind of thing. These policies are important. They're important for the parents, they're important for the students, they're very important. And we can't just assume that people aren't reading them or, it's very important. And thirdly, we've all been elected to, policy falls on us. This is where it falls. This is where it stops. It's with us. We care more about policy in this town than anybody else should, like the school committee. So it's on us. It's our ethical responsibility to make sure that once we know something's wrong, that we fix it. So review and revise. There's no quick fix. I full-heartedly agree with everybody. This is going to take time. In order to do it correctly, it's going to take time. We need to make sure that we're doing our due diligence and we're conducting policy assessments and going through for the best interest of the district. My recommendation for policy Subcommittee would be to take, just as I had done back in April, because what I did in April, I wouldn't say that it's relevant anymore because that was a snapshot in time. And I had stated that when I presented it to the school committee, when I presented it to Dr. Cummings, when I sat with Mandy and went over it. It's a snapshot. Do you have any questions, Dr. Cummings? You keep writing.
No, nothing following along.
So there was, it was a snapshot in time. It was not meant as a working... So my recommendation is to take, and you all have it in the drive, just as I had done, the 2023 manual and compare it to the 2024. I highly recommend using the method in which I had done of separating it out, policy A, like sections A, B, C, and D. Because when I, personally, when I tried to do it as a whole, you're looking at 600 policies side by side. Your eyes will go numb from that. So I would compare the two, find discrepancies. Luckily, you guys don't actually even have to look at the missing policies. Dr. Cummings has already reviewed that portion of it. I've reviewed it, he's reviewed it. There's a list has already been established of that. So it's more looking at the new policies, the practices. It's a little bit less than what was once done. Next, we need to oversee implementation. And this is a recommendation actually for Dr. Cummings in his office. Policy, while we make it and create it, it falls on you guys to make sure that it's implemented. As much as I or anybody here would like to say, I know every practice of the Grafton public school system, I don't, we don't. So I think that just as we made a list with recommendations on the deleted policies, it might be helpful if you made a list of the policies and either agreed or disagreed whether we adhere to these, whether they're useful for our district, whether they're applicable to the district.
Are you talking about all policies? Sorry to interrupt. Go through it by, in concert with the committee or go through the...
I would think on your own, I would think it would be quicker if you did it as the way you did the missing policies. But this is just a recommendation. And if we're keeping these policies, as the school committee, we need to definitely ensure that they're being followed through. Like if we're keeping the kindergarten entrance age, for example, we need to change everything that says on September 1st. And you need to also include that we are now allowing exceptions. And you need to come up with a formula as to how those exceptions are made and what is done for them.
That's the policy Subcommittee has to debate that and bring that to the committee as a whole.
I don't, I don't know that I agree with that. The policy says that the principals make that determination. I don't, I don't think that that's something that...
Right, so let's not, yeah, we don't want to get drawn down.
If we have to pick one way, we have to pick one way.
I agree.
And it's my understanding that it was, that was a mistake and I would have just emailed the correct policy over, but last time I did that, I got accused of nefariously updating policies. So my recommendation would be that we bring it back the way it used to be and we add it to an agenda.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to get bogged down.
So I think some of these are just certain, like, you know, mistakes and we own those mistakes and they've been pointed out. They're, thank you, like, great.
Right. And we're not here, like I said, to deliberate on every policy. These are just examples. There's, like I said, it's a cockroach. You see one, there's a lot more.
I like to think of it as a flower. Madam Chair, can I just make one clarification? So when we review our policies, Dr. Cummings joins us and that's when we ask him questions about, hey, is this policy something we still do? Is this, do you have any thoughts on this? And he offers us, so we do it kind of collaboratively that way and it seems...
I mean, do it however you'd like. I'm just saying, back in June, he did his own listing.
He did with help, but yeah, he did his own listing because it was asked of him to help us try to get organized. Thank you, Jay. That was great of you to do over the summer. Appreciate you.
Yes, thank you. Is there any other, are there any other questions?
I don't have any. I'll move out of your seat now. I'll move you out of my seat.
Thanks for you, Amy.
I'm going to say I'm moving to your seat now.
Musical chairs.
I actually don't think we're that far off from one another because we both agree that there's a lot of work to do and it can't be done all at once and that there's a process, so good news. So I wanted to take time because at our last, at our September 10th school committee meeting, I sort of made a recommendation or brought up an idea of a way to kind of move past what I think is a lot of logjam and back and forth. And then our conversation got a little heated and off track and I feel that I didn't get to really clarify what I meant by that. What I did not mean was, let's just approve the whole manual and not worry about it ever again. So I wanted to clarify a little bit what I meant when I said that and talk a little bit about how we got here. So in 2022, the school committee discussed moving to the mask, MASC, sorry, MASC, you know, sort of policies. And at the time, three of the five of us were not members of the committee. Moving forward, at the January 10th, 2023 school committee meeting, the committee agreed to sign the contract and move forward with the long and messy move to our policies being hosted by the MASC. When that discussion happened, two of the five of us were not members of the committee. So the action I proposed on the 10th was really designed to kind of try to get us on the same page in terms of, yes, there is a lot to go through. Are they all, I mean, of course, policy is important. Of course, we want this to be done well and appropriately. But as Kristi alluded to and I'm going to talk about as I go through my slides, policy takes a long time. We have a process. Things come back to us multiple times. And addressing everything in the spreadsheet or whatever we do, the new assessment and comparison we do, it's going to take a long time. And right now, I mean, because things are sort of thrown over the transom to the policy Subcommittee as opposed to us, the policy Subcommittee, ourselves, addressing and saying, okay, we want to deal with Section A or Section E and look and compare, instead, things are being thrown at us. I don't think we're doing it strategically and we don't feel in control of it, right? So what I had hoped to do with my suggestion on the 10th was to come to a place where we all agree that there's a baseline understanding that the policies were moved. The vast majority of them are not causing terrible problems in our schools right now. We understand that they require action and we have to come up with a reasonable timeline for doing so. I want to, I had also hoped to sort of agree on areas that needed immediate action. So for example, in Section E, I personally have two or three policies that I want to review because they're currently not in our manual. They have been in the past. I want to make sure they are addressed in some way. I'm sure other members of the committee do as well. So my hope was to sort of agree to the baseline, identify among all of us areas of concern that needed immediate action and to move quickly to kind of a regular review process as opposed to this fire hose of, what about this one and what about that one? And being in agreement as to how we were going to do it. So I kind of spoke quickly and off the cuff, conversation got off track and I don't feel like I necessarily ever had the opportunity to refine what I was talking about. So policy review takes time. We all agree here, I think, right? Yeah, we have to post a meeting agenda for the policy Subcommittee, at least 48 hours in advance. Then we meet. Sometimes there's more review and research that needs to be done. Finally, we have something and we can bring it to the Subcommittee, to the committee for a first reading. We may have to go back and do additional research. Most recent example of that was the student use of technology in schools. We've brought various versions of that to the committee. And then, of course, there's the second reading. So it can take a month or more for a single policy to make it through the process. When we're throwing these enormous numbers out... When we're throwing these enormous numbers out of things that need to be addressed, you can see how it becomes very overwhelming and how we're, we're already behind, right? When you talk about policies that haven't been looked at since X year, you, of course, we're behind. There's an enormous number of policies and it's a long process. So how do we quickly kind of come to a place where we can move forward? There is a process. It is extremely aggressive. For example, not much really happens in July and August, right? So you see this up on the board. We've got year one, we've got a three-year process where we look at each section in depth. Probably, um, and this was in our former BGC policy that we no longer have, but this was the schedule. Um, do we need to maybe take a look at this schedule again? For sure. Um, because it's aggressive and, you know, we're doing two sections in a period of time. We don't meet regularly every year. So, um, but a process exists. So how do we get to a place where we've established a baseline, we're comfortable to kind of move through this process? And if that means a couple of meetings where we deal with the, um, manual, maybe more than a couple, by section, where we're comfortable with the baseline, um, maybe that's the way we go. But I think we need to identify urgent policies that are negatively impacting our school community, communities for immediate review and get them settled and agreed upon. And then, once urgent policies are addressed, let us go through the process. I think that, at least my understanding from the January tenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting, was that a lot of the MASC policies, we agreed in principle to move to them. So sometimes, Christie, you may bring us a policy and say, we never voted on this. And I feel that we kind of did because we agreed to move to that policy.
Yeah, that's not what I'm saying. I, I fully agree with you.
Great.
I want that, when we said we're having policy A, we're taking MASC version of policy A.
Yep, no need to vote on that, correct?
No need to vote on that. I am fully in agreement. I think that we can.
Awesome, good.
But what I am saying is, we had policy A, now we have policy A and X. We never had policy X. Where did policy X? We need to vote on that because we never had it.
Right.
It's a brand new policy. It was never in our, in our manual. We never had policy X, like we never had.
And maybe it moved over, and maybe we have it by mistake and we don't even need to have it.
Right, exactly. And that's exactly it. Maybe we don't need to have it. Maybe we shouldn't be carrying excess policies that we don't need. Like, for example, the.
Yeah, the goal is to not have Frankenstein, right?
The gang one. You know, we don't want, we don't want more work for ourselves. That's the whole reason you switched over to MASC. It's not so that we can carry five hundred policies. So if we took on policies by mistake, by all means, we should get rid of them. But we need to figure out, and I think that's why you guys need to do a new audit of comparison to figure out, what are the new policies? Like, and if we don't need it, get rid of it. Just get rid of it. We don't need it and we never voted to accept it. And I don't even think you need a full two-round vote on it. I think we could just all sit here and say, we don't need this policy, this policy, this policy, this policy. Because we never voted to accept it. So it shouldn't have been there in the first place.
I don't know.
Does anybody have any thoughts on that?
I would love to be able to do that. I don't feel like that's what's been in practice. I feel like every time, like I think this is, that's a great idea. Like, we absolutely can do that.
Yeah.
Like, I want, I just want to not have, I, yeah.
Right, I, that's, yeah, I mean, it's, if we never had the policy, we never voted to accept the policy.
Yeah, why can't we just remove it?
Why can't we remove the policy? But it needs to be brought in front of the whole committee. We can't just take out policies willy-nilly, like.
No.
The whole committee should be fully aware of, look, subcommittee, we, we looked through these ten policies. We've spoken with Dr. Cummings. They're not applicable to us. We don't, we've never had a gang, um, in service. We've not, we're not, we don't have any plans on doing something to this. Like, let's pretend the policy is unicorns in school. We never had a policy on unicorns in school. We don't need a policy on unicorns in school. Suzie Q's never bringing her unicorn to school. Get rid of the unicorns in school policy. Because that really applies to dead 'em when they love to bring unicorns to their school.
They can afford the unicorns.
They can afford the unicorns. We can't here.
So, any, anything, I guess I don't need to sit here anymore.
You can if you want.
I mean, it's kind of fun.
Some. If you want to, yeah. My question is actually, so back onto the, the schedule. I don't know if you want, okay.
Oh, do you want me to go back?
No.
Oh, it's off, it's off.
Thank you, Leora.
Turned off the screens.
Okay, never mind. It's fine. We all have it in front of us.
I just, before you, before you, I just want to thank Leora for, for preparing the slides.
Sure, I'm gonna leave that.
Yeah. So you wanted to go to the, we have, we have a process?
The process, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't feel as though this is an effective process. And, and I, I'm not just saying that because I'm, I'm not trying to be argumentative and it's not what it, but the reason why we switched over to MASC, one of the reasons was, this process wasn't really working, right? Like, it didn't work. Back in two thousand and twenty-two, I'd actually presented to Dr. Cummings, I have it up on my screen now, a listing of two hundred and forty-seven policies that were more than three years out of date. This process, I, I don't think it works.
No, well, and I think I said that when I put it up. Like, it's aggressive and it's difficult.
But, yeah.
So it needs to be revisited, but, but I think a, a cycle of a certain period of time makes sense. We can't, like, it's a fire hose right now.
Well, right now, well, because, but I think, once we get the fire hose under control, MASC is going to take care of the rest.
Yes, yes, yes.
So we don't need to do this.
What can we do to make, help you feel like the fire hose is, because I just want to say, my timeline is not your timeline. That I have been, it has been very clear to me. I cannot work on twenty policies at once and bring them back. That wasn't effective for this policy subcommittee. So I, I totally agree. Like, the reason why we had to MASC was because we were so behind and I wanted a baseline of policies that were up to date and then we could start fresh and be able to get through them. But we're not, so.
Right, we're not going anywhere. We're just, we're just treading water at this point. And it's frustrating for everybody. Everybody is frustrated.
Yep, agreed.
Personally, I think, so we know we have those five categories. What's the easiest one to tackle? Let's get rid of those, the December. Well, no, not the ones we, no, the December stuff. We know.
Right.
Like, they've looked at them. You don't have to, like.
They give us the new policies, basically, right?
We could, like, probably at the next policies, at the school committee meeting, we could, you could have already had a policy subcommittee meeting about those.
Sure. And we may not even need a policy subcommittee meeting. We could probably just maybe put them on.
Right.
I think we probably could. Can I, can I ask a question though? Because one of the, one of the things that, um, that Leora said, and I, and I tend to agree, is that, you know, we need to identify if there are any policy, if there are any policy situations that are in urgent need.
Yep.
Those policies that you're talking about, in my mind, they're nice. We haven't had them till now. They don't, on my very brief reading, I'm not, nothing is jumping out at me and saying, yes, we need to have that policy right now, today. Is there a situation that is out there right now that's urgent that would take precedent over that list?
I would take precedent, I would get the handbooks from Dr. Cummings. Whatever policies he's referencing in the handbooks. I know that, for example, he references JK dash R, JK dash R two, JK dash R three. Those were old policies. Though, they, we wanted to keep them as graft in specific and I really don't want to get bogged down in deliberation right now. However, those are more of handbook items. They're, they're school-specific where we know that policy is district-specific and we've got a new policy called JK. It takes care of all of those. I would, I think that the most important thing, since Dr. Cummings and Mandy are going to be presenting handbooks, we don't want to trickle this issue five steps down, right? Like, we don't want, we have a problem here and then they have a problem there and now the student has a problem there. So I think personally, that the most important policies that we look at are the handbook ones. The ones that we need to be disseminating to the students and to the faculty.
And if I'm not mistaken, we've done some of those.
We have.
We've done the As.
We've done some of them, yes. So I would recommend that policy subcommittee look at all the policies that he's, that's being recommended in the, in the handbooks. And some of them, you're just going to check off. You're not even going to review it. You're just going to say, yeah, we just looked at that. We just looked at that. We just looked at that.
Yeah, we did look.
So that, to me, those are the most important ones. And that's why, back after, we talked about handbooks, I sent you guys the listing of these, we need to look at these policies. Because if we're going to have accurate handbooks, we need accurate policies.
And we didn't ignore that. We just were also already looking at the policies you had sent us before that we had already looked at.
And I think, I think that's where it gets challenging, right? Like, and sometimes you send them over, but I don't really know why you sent them over, right? Like, there isn't always a, a full explanation. So I'm like, okay, is this more important?
I feel like I write a lot. I feel like I write too much, in fact.
Well, that might be, so it's just for me, and it's, and I think I tried to say this, like, it's just a communic, like, it's just sometimes, like, you know what? You guys are great on spreadsheets. I'm a bulleted person. Like, somebody just says, look at this, Laura, 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 you know? That's an easier way for me. So I understand, like, I'm trying. And I think that I just, we're, yeah.
So, yeah, so I, I personally, I think, have Dr. Cummings send over, like, he already did the rights and responsibilities. Have him send over whatever you have for the employee handbooks. Send it over. Send it to all of us.
We, yeah, like, we said last night, we still have to work on the linking, but.
But do you have the policy numbers or codes?
Yeah, we can have that by Friday.
Okay, so then send that, yeah.
In a bulleted list?
In a bulleted list, please.
Numbered?
Numbered.
Colored?
Or if you, if you, if you don't have the time, you can send them to me and I will pull them out and make them a bulleted list.
I can do it.
Okay.
We could do it.
Just offering to help.
Thank you.
No, we appreciate it. But you understand it's hard, right? When we're trying to do our job and we feel like everybody's playing in our.
All right.
Subcommittee. It's, it's a challenge, right? We're not, we're all peers. And sometimes, I will speak for myself, sometimes I feel like I'm, and I, it's not intentional. I get that some of it's my reaction to it. But I'm a grown adult and I feel that I'm being told, okay, well, this is what you need to do, or you are not being ethical. That hurt a little bit in your presentation. I feel like I have to say it.
I'm not saying that you're not being ethical. I'm saying that we as a committee need to, we know our, we, we all know, we are elected officials. We all know that we need to adhere to the ethics. We all know that we need to, to, to do that. All I'm, I'm.
I hear you. But I'm just being honest about, sometimes it is difficult to be on a policy subcommittee, a subcommittee that gets so much attention and input from everyone where I don't feel in control of it at the moment. I feel like I'm always reacting. So I, my hope is we're coming out of this with a plan and that is great.
Yeah.
So once, once we have those policies dealt with, are you saying that the policy subcommittee would like to revisit this?
I don't.
Process as a second step?
I don't know if we don't know.
I mean, I agree with, with Chrissy a ton. I mean, look, I've been doing this for a long time and we, when I started, we were behind by years.
Yeah.
Jay, policy Jay, I brought it up many years, you know, and things happen, right? We have an override and that takes a lot of attention. And we have COVID and that takes a lot of, I mean, not to make excuses, but like, things happen. Like, I wish our job was just reviewing policies. So I don't know if this process isn't, you know, I, I know it, I agree.
Even when I present it, but I said it's not nearly effective.
But my thought is exactly what Chrissy said too, is we're going, like, it's not, we're going to have a baseline where everything is legal, like, we're in, we're in much better shape than is maybe being perceived to.
That is, yes.
We're in better shape than we've ever been. We have, it has been clunky. Do I wish I had never recommended this? A hundred percent. But I did. And, um, I still, you know, I, we could have just copied and pasted all the MASC as we went through it and we waited. We lost time because it was, you know, and things got behind and messy. Um, and, um, you know, it's, it's what it is, what it is. So moving forward, we, um, I'm happy to do it. And I would also just, like, hey, just, hey, you missed this one. Like, it's okay. Like, yep, I'm, I make mistakes. And I will guarantee every person in this room makes mistakes. Guess what? I make mistakes in my real job, my job that pays me and that helps put my children through school. And have been, you know, and you make mistakes and you figure it out and you move forward. So it's like, hey, this got left off the agenda? Oh, okay. We'll make sure it gets on the next one. It, it's, it's, it's cool. So.
I agree with, with Laura. Um, actually, Laura, you might find this very funny. I had advocated to Dr. Cummings for years that we switch over to MASC.
I did too. We had to wait till we had the right committee to do it.
I was in full agreement. I, and I'm still in full agreement that MASC is much better than what we had. Um, so I think that this process, this, this, this is, this is garbage. It's not going to work. Uh, I mean, to be honest, like, it's just.
Okay, but can I, can I just ask, like, I know you don't mean it that way, but I just presented it. I went through it and you're like, garbage. I mean, how am I supposed to feel?
But you said it was not good either. We've all just said that this process isn't going to work.
I hear you.
It's not, I'm not meaning to sound flippant. I'm just letting, like, like, it's just, like, it's not going to work. We all know it's not going to work. You agree that it's not going to work. So what can we do?
Because we have less policies now, though, and they're not going to take as long to go through it. When they were out, like, we used to have policies and, like, I guess I probably seem like a little bit more laid back about policy because I was there when the policies were like, like, people would write them superlative, whatever that word is, and.
Relatives?
No, just like crazy trying to like, control the principles. So we took a ton of work to get those and it took forever. But now we're going to start with ones that are, like, we, they probably aren't going to take months. Some do, if you're doing them right. Some do. So, I mean, I think I just want to start and be able, and we, we say we have to get them all done within three years. So there's twelve months in a year. We work probably ten, maybe eleven months. You know, we can certainly, whoever's chair can throw a workshop on and we can get policies done. But like, it is what it is. We have one, two, three, four, five, six, twelve sections. So we have to do it some way. We need to be, and we used to, like, people would literally go through them and like, we need to change this word grammatical. Like, we've gotten better about thinking strategically about our policies than what it has been. So I'd like to just get through the emergencies and then, I mean, we can think about it more. And that's not really the goal of this, um, workshop either, and make a different recommendation. I mean, I totally, the July, August, that's not getting done. Nobody's in school. Like, that's silly. I agree.
Yeah, there's, this isn't exactly right.
And so on this, like, whether you go with this kind of thing or not, is this, like, would you? So we have all those deleted policies, those sixty-two deleted policies. A lot of them are just MASC reference.
Yeah.
Or whatnot. And I, and I know we tried to go through like a huge clunk at once and that didn't really, wasn't work. That was painful for everybody. It was frustrating for everyone. Um, but this doesn't account for those.
No, this, whatever process we decide on to go for our three-year process or whatever, has to come after we clean and get to baseline. And I think we all agree that.
And we lost a bunch before that. Before we moved over, we got rid of a lot of policies too. So it's just, we have less than we did before. Um, and they're going to be up to date. We're not going to be starting with ten-year-old out-of-date policies, hopefully.
Right, so, I mean, hopefully, like, it, it took me seven days to make, to, to, to create the.
By yourself and probably in the day. We have to meet at a nighttime, you know?
No, 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 I'm, I'm, please let me finish.
Sorry, Chrissy.
I'm, I'm just saying, like, to create a listing of discrepancies. What I would recommend the two of you do, because you don't need to do it together. You don't need to sit together and say, what are the discrepancies? Like, let's figure out, like, if you had a shared Google spreadsheet and you said, look, Laura, I'm going to look at pol, sections A, B, C, D, E, and you look at F, G, H, I, J. Like, some of these sections, like H, have three policies.
Right.
But some of them, like G, have a ton, have thirty-two policies. I has a bunch of policies. Um, some of them were extremely painstaking for me to go through. I'm not going to lie. It was a lot. It was reading, rereading, re, go, oh, wait, here's another policy. This, this one reminds me of a different one that I just read a day ago. Let me try to figure out what that policy was a day ago. So I've done a lot of the work for you. If you look, if you, I, I reference, like, I'll say, if I could, Jay doesn't have it up, like, Leora.
Yeah.
I say, look at, this is, this is.
What section are you on?
It's like, look at G, look at G, for instance.
Yep.
Actually, can I pull this up?
Yeah, I see. Like, for example, you have, you have notes. I mean, I went through it.
It's in the, it's in the, uh, the materials.
The drive?
Yeah.
So for GCBA, for example, you've got like a reference to what it was called in our twenty-three manual.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I, like, so I've done. so like, this one, and E, like, it also refer- it's, it was EEAC in two thousand and twenty-three, like, and I, like, I, I reference back and forth
Yeah.
a lot, to acco- to account for coding.
Differences, right.
Differences, so, for example, GCC was, like, this, this was actually GCC, like,
Yeah.
I go back and forth a lot.
So, so I would.
For the coding issues.
Right, so I would drill down and say, okay, so what's the real issue there, do we just need to pick a code?
There's no issue, that was a personal note, just so that you guys, so that everybody knew that, that I wasn't not accounting for a policy because you don't see a code, I'm accounting for it, it's just.
It's just called something else now.
Because there were coding issues. So I accounted for those coding issues, and that's why, anything that's highlighted is an action item, right? That's what I tried to show, look, MASC Policy Manual two thousand and twenty-four, and I put column B, new to MASC, I put an X in it to indicate that it's new, we never had it. Then if you go to the side, Policy Manual two thousand and twenty-three, this was our old manual, not in MASC, meaning it's not, it didn't get transferred over, I put an X, I highlighted, if there's no highlight, highlight or X, there's no, nothing that needs to be done.
Right.
Can I ask a question about the?
As far as new versus old, yeah.
The, the section, the GPS Policy Manual twenty-twenty-three, the ones that are not transferred over, this is more, I guess, more of a technical issue, it's like, if this, these are policies that we've already approved, they're in our old manual, do we have to have a vote to put them into?
Well, you gotta do.
MASC.
Well, we've gotta do something, either we're, you've gotta review them and determine if we're not keeping them, then we're, then we're deleting them, and if we're gonna delete them, then we have a policy process for that, I think it's BG, something, a policy suspension, I don't know the, it's off the top of my head.
But if we're, if we wanted to keep them, they're already.
Then you don't, I don't think you have to vote to keep it, but, but we do have to acknowledge, again, like, just as the same as if we're getting rid of a policy that we never had before, right? Like, we're getting rid of unicorns in schools, we never had it, we, we at least have to mention it in front of the committee, like, we're, we're, you know.
I don't think it has to be a vote either, it doesn't have to be a two-part, first reading, second reading.
No, it doesn't have to be a vote, it just has to be, but we all should be aware of the policies that are moving over, like, if, if we didn't, if harassment policy, this one, and, and all my stuff is linked too, so if you click on it, it links up to the policy. So, if we looked at this policy, and we said, look, we don't need this policy anymore, because we have so many new policies that kinda cover it.
Right.
Or, or we say, we do need, let's say we do need this policy, like, to your point, we need it, we had it, we still want it. I don't think we need to have a vote on it, because we had it, we want it, we're just keeping it, we're just.
Right, it's just a policy.
It's just a move over.
Policy, right.
Right, Amy, what do you think?
Well, if, if, if the district has proceeded under the, under the, I'm struggling with the word here, the umbrella that we are still observing that policy, that we're still holding it, the fact that it's not on the website is not that important. So I don't think we need the vote.
Yeah, I don't think we need the vote, but we do need the acknowledgement.
It does have to be publicly, yeah, I agree.
That we're.
There needs to be a record of it.
There should be record of it.
Wait, so I'm so sorry, this is where I just get, like, I don't know what you guys are talking about. Like, MASC new, like, does that, like, I need this word differently, like, this is where I'm just, like, that's why I said, like, when I look at this, like, it's a lot of work, it's awesome.
But it doesn't follow your.
It's like a different language to me.
So we're talking about things that didn't move over, like, missing po- policies we had that did not make the move over.
So that's what I need that header to say.
Well, okay, well, so, yeah, when you guys do it, create whatever headers you want, I don't care.
Leora, I think I'm just gonna need you to
Yeah.
clarify that, yeah.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
I can make a copy and make it make sense.
So what is, what is, what does the committee feel as we, you know, move forward, what is, what does the committee feel, I guess I'll ask the subcommittee first, you know, we have these groups of policies.
Yep.
What do you feel, or do you need time to discuss it, like, is the most important kind of next step, after we get through the handbook stuff? Is it the policies that are, that are new, that we've never had before, that need to be looked at? Is it the stuff that's been forgotten but still exists, like, how do you dice that up?
Well, the, I guess my question is, how comfortable are we voting on some of those in groupings, right, like, let's deal with the, here's a whole bunch of policies that we never had before, here's the group that we just wanna get rid of, we're all good, great, here's the group we wanna keep, let's put them through the process, um, versus, you know, here are the ones that didn't make it over, of those, here's the chunk that we just wanna agree we don't need, like, can we vote on those as groups? I mean, I just, I wanna get to baseline.
Personally, I think that as long as we identify them, like, I, I'm, what, I was at that meeting on September tenth, was most worried about was that we were not identifying the policies that, to be voted on, that, like, so as long as you're saying, like, look, um, policy A, B, C, D, E, F, G.
Yeah, they would be on the agenda.
Yeah.
Right, as long as those are identified, and we have a chance to look at them.
Yeah, I think that's.
So where it could be done as a group, but if we, we can't just say, like, section A is all set, like, wait a minute, like, you know.
We would never do that, I mean, to be honest, on September tenth, I literally thought that you believed that any MASC policy we had, that was not specifically voted on, had to be voted on, and I was like, okay, can we just establish that, so we can move forward?
No, and that's why I, I, I felt that there was confusion too, like, because I, I didn't think that you guys were understanding that we have new policies, that
No.
New policies that are not, that we never had before, like, I, I don't think that that point was getting across. Um, you know, like, we have the unicorn policy.
So I'm, I'm okay with groups, I think what, what I always wanna make sure is that we're not, we're never rushing anybody. That, you know, if you guys, you know, you sit down and you have a two-hour policy subcommittee meeting, and you bang out, let's say you go through all a hundred and three in one policy subcommittee meeting,
Not happening.
And you give us a week, that's not gonna, that's not gonna be something that's gonna be comfortable for everybody. So I think, as long as you guys are cognizant about breaking it up into chunks, that are.
You've been to our subcommittee meetings, right?
Well, I mean.
I also think.
This is different, right, this is looking at policies with an eye toward, do we need this?
Right.
And that can be quick, and I, you know, I, I kinda hope it is quick, some of them are gonna be really obvious.
Yes, like the unicorn policy, for sure.
But I guess that would be my only concern, that we're not doing.
I want a unicorn policy, I'm writing that.
I feel like we need one now.
A unicorn?
I think it would help us.
Very much, I'm sorry, we're talking over you, and that's why I kind of reached out and said sorry.
I, I, I'm used to it.
With this group, for sure.
Rebecca's been trying it.
Yes, go ahead.
I did wanna say, and I mean, obviously, this is sort of how things run anyway, but it's like, if Leora presented a motion to pass forty policies all at once, and I had an issue with three of them, obviously in discussion, we could talk about that and pass it without those three. Like, that's always an option.
I, I love, I love consent agendas, I'm a big fan of those, that if we can pass a group, and go back to the, the one that you wanted to talk about more, maybe Laura wanted to talk about one more, I think that that's a great approach, and that could help us make some real headway. But I, also, I understand that there's time required in reading and preparation for the meetings, so I don't want people to feel overwhelmed, so if, if you do, please, you know, please say something, if it's too much, we can always table part of it to another week, and.
Do you wanna say, also, there's time on the subcommittee to, we put the books together, and we don't have help, we don't have a secretary, we don't have our own, so, you know, it is, it is us, and.
And it's work.
And it's, it is work, and we have to do it in ti- so we'll might meet on a Tuesday, then it could, you know, we have to get you guys the book, so it's, it is time, like, that's just, and it sucks, and, but like, we're not, we're in good company, like, it's not like, you know.
Everyone else has it all figured out.
No, I mean, I've been to many policy training meetings, um, and, yeah.
Oh, and I, um, as I'm looking at this, I also noted, because some policies, I was supposed to, we kept as our own, but we had said we were gonna switch over to the MASC policy, like, I, I made a note on, on these.
Alright, if I have questions, I'm gonna just email you and say, Chrissy, what do you mean, and you'll tell me again, okay? And just be patient with me.
Yeah.
While I try to speak.
So, yeah. Luckily, like I keep saying, I've already made the list of the deleted policies, you don't have to worry about that. You don't have to go back and figure that out, that list has been made, Dr. Cummings has that list, he has made recommendations to that list. So, as far as the deleted policies, when you guys are looking at it, you don't have to take that into consideration. Do you agree? Do we not agree?
We don't have, you mean, they don't have to go looking for it?
They don't have to go looking for it, no, like, when I did it, it was like.
I thought we tackled a lot, some of those, so that's what I'm confused, is we went through Dr. Cummings, that's the thing.
We went through, we voted on thirty-nine out of the hundred and one, so there were sixty-two still left.
Okay.
And then, then Dr. Sorry, sorry.
When you, when you're done.
Through a kink in the whole thing, with the, I recommend we switch over all to Policy G, Policy G goes all to MASC, so that section, that's gonna require a lot more review, because we have some of our own policies in Policy G, like, that, that's, that's an issue in and of itself there.
I'm sorry, can you restate that, so I understand what you perceive the issue to be, so I.
So see.
I have it up.
Yeah, I, like, you guys have it in the printout.
Yeah, I just didn't understand, so, we did keep some.
In Policy G.
Yeah. I have it up.
This is the most important one, yeah. All the policies in this section is, the one is the most important for us to have updated and in line with MGL. I do not believe that any graft in specific policy should be included in this section, correct?
But we do have graft in policies included in this section, though, okay.
Yeah, we do, and so you're gonna have to review that. And then the other question then becomes, and I've actually posed this to Dr. Cummings before, is when you say you want all of Policy G, does that mean you want us to go back to the MASC reference manual and see what else they have in Policy G, and consider those?
Right, which is what we would do when we were reviewing Policy G.
Right.
Had the chance to, because.
So, but.
That's what we do.
Yeah, so, but the, the point is, is that, we already have the hundred and one, you, you, this is the list, here you go, you got it. And honestly, like, just as Dr. Cummings went through this audit to create his list of missing, you could do the same based on my audit in, in April, to cre- to, to create the new, I mean, you could just do that, but we've had changes to the manual since then, this is a snapshot, I keep wanna, keep saying that.
We've addressed some of these.
Some of these have been addressed.
Right.
Personally, what, if it were me, instead of reinventing the wheel, and Laura's gonna hate me when I, because I'm gonna start talking about Excel worksheets.
No, I mean, I do my, most of my policy in Excel worksheets, it's just they have to be mine. I just don't understand other people's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What I would do, if, if it were, if it were me, I would go, I would add a, a section there, I would get rid of the color, no color, and I would go to the MASC manual, just as I did before, and I would copy their policies, paste them in from our manual.
And compare.
And compare. That's what I would do, but I mean, you do it however you wanna do it, that's just a recommendation, because it's already, and.
Yep, so, yeah, we have, yeah. Yeah. Thanks.
So do we have a plan?
Not really, well, they're gonna do the handbook stuff, right?
Handbooks first.
That's a big, that's a big one.
Then Policy Subcommittee will start to bring us policies in groups.
But I guess what kind of groups, uh, will you tackle first? Will you tackle?
I mean, I think the easiest group to tackle first after handbook policies is the policies we've never had before, because I'm guessing a lot of them, we've never had them because we don't need them.
Alright, so.
But, I mean, that's my gut, I wanna talk, I, obviously, I'm, there are two of us on the subcommittee, so.
Subcommittee should probably.
So we should talk, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean.
I kinda wanna hear from you guys, because I do not wanna go back and make our recommendations, and then have a.
A debate about it.
I agree with, I agree with what she said, I, you know, figure out what these, what these new policies are that we've never read before, and, and recommend that we need them, or not need them, and then, you know, that way we don't have stuff sitting on our books that we're supposed to be following, that we're obviously not, because we've never had them.
Never knew we had it, like, it's, it's, you can't say, like, you know, we're following something you never know you had, like, it's just, we, you know, we don't know we have it, we don't, but.
That to me is a bigger problem than policies that are not on the website right now, that we're still operating under, because we have them, we know them, the staff knows them. That to me is a.
Policies before the web.
We did, in a binder, and I had one, I don't remember the year it was, but yeah.
So then the question, another question arises, just as back when you were going through this transfer, and we had on the website still under construction kind of thing, like, if we know we have these other policies, and, and everybody, we have these other policies, they're not showing in MASC, do we put some kind of disclaimer to that on our website to alert people, like, like, just as we had put everything but these eighty-two policies, just so we're all clear, like,
Is there something that says?
Policies, but we also have these ones.
Is there something that says, if you have questions about the policies, reach out to, and then there's an email, is that there? Is that was there?
I don't remember.
I don't know.
If not, I mean, that, that.
We could use someone that.
That's how I would do it, because I don't, I guess what I'm saying, Christie, is I don't, I don't think we should have two lists of policies.
No, 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 I don't want two lists of policies, but I think that there should be some kind of disclaimer.
I would just say, if you have, something that says, if you have questions or concerns about the policies, reach out to.
Yeah, well, or that we're still reviewing policies.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah.
The, from the transfer, some policies are still being reviewed. Um, but, again, like, I guess, once you guys identify those, again, you figure out, I don't know, I don't know if it's worth it to just finish what we started, like, it's kinda hard to go back and forth between things, like, is it, like, we've started the deleted, we've started these policies.
The list from Jay?
List from Jay, like, like, it's, it's a lot of context switching, if we keep going back and forth, like, we're gonna do this, and then we're gonna do this, and then we're gonna, like, that's part of the problem, right, is that we feel like there's a lot of context switching.
We're jumping around too much?
We're jumping around too much.
Yeah.
Right, like, so.
Yeah, yes.
It, it.
Okay.
So why don't we finish what we started, finish, like, do the handbook things, because that's very important, so that we don't keep having problems go through, like, we don't want, you know, a leak to turn into a flood.
Excuse me.
But finish what we started, like, I would, those five categories, I try to bang those out, and be like, look, we're gonna do this. We started it, let's keep going with it, then I'm gonna do the MASC policies from December, that's another category done, boom, now we've got two categories done. Try to do it as efficiently, like, we wanna do it yeah, the most efficient way possible.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah. Do you love me, because I said efficiency, Laura?
I do, I want to be efficient.
Okay. Anybody else have anything? Do we need the next meeting?
Heck no, I don't believe so.
Heck no. Okay.
And wait, though, wh- while we're doing that, like, you know, you got an hour, start comparing some po- like, start working on that audit, comparing, you know what I mean, like, just, you know.
I'd recommend you quit while you're ahead, Chris. I really do, thank you for all your work, and this, it was very appreciative, and we will get on it.
But it's, it's still gonna take a long time.
Remember that my hours might look different than your hours.
Or just, we're gonna tackle it the way we're gonna tackle it, right?
I don't, I don't sleep, so, my hours are usually from two in the morning.
Right, so I do sleep, and commute, and have, and have, you know, so, I appreciate this work very much, and thank you, and thanks for being patient and flexible with us.
And you, yeah, you've done a ton of work here, that gives us place to start.
It's awesome.
Alright, I think this was good, anything else, anybody? Alright, thanks a lot, follow during the meeting.
Thanks.